Azuya xaxa yortutam, madil ti wul shariyutam. Akh nani weh xetashita, milxet aaral külle brita. Azuya xaxa yortutam, madil ti wul shariyutam. Akh nani weh xetashita, milxet aaral külle brita.
Xabni san ni dan umtanaya, xadbiyekul ashuraya. Xabni san khudatakatan, rymzale naqraqlitutan. Xabni san shu xolaya, mauladakakul shuraya. Xabni san khuyadakatan, hemantan naqraqlitutan.
Bi taxiyudiyur eke mutya. Amuk xhuvad atur umti dulesutya. Qamubunib sauraqutya, zarada shurlile xutya. Barxela, barxetya, bessa umtimura rajatyya. Qamubunib sauraqutya, zargeta shurlile xutya. Barxela, barxetya, bessa umtimura rajatyya.
Xabni san ni dan umtanaya, xadbiyekul ashuraya. Xabni san khudatakatan, rymzale naqraqlitutan. Xabni san shu xolaya, mauladakakul.
Şlam ala xun geshqanem ugrib, ana Ivan Carmen Morad. Beshqalan aperset o baru xuvan, şita xetet aturayid ishtelpe shavamo shavi. Al külle umti sogul, ikit evitun giu tevil. Prishayid umtan giu atret avahatan. Udiyo ammi ilan bi qurtajanet tanus, qadila dabrantet Assyrian Wellness Collaborative, obdawilan xha hamzamta ra ba magdiyanta. Qadila nazbed şita xetet aturayi, qad pishdala entirta, giu Stanislas County, gudapenitet akhanan baxayiqgavu, giu state of California. Bşenet itet bi qurtajanet.
Uyad basamta, kadam tabrukta azistii. Kadam tabruktan umti sogul, arda shubkanii. Baru xuvan ah idagura, obzireshit diyan, reshit aturayi, ishtelpe shavamo shavi arpa. Xehet mariyala ha yavilan salamatutya, obzi xubba, şlamah, giu külle umtan.
Amin bi qurtajanet. Kma şapurtet edan ham şitan, ham idagura, moydale bedwaqix, o betvatan vaina milie min burkaie, min slautan. Inam, udiyo hamzamta bi qurtajanet, yumit isri ishta, yumit tlushiba, yerxet adar, trelpe isri arpa. Xayuma rabo şapira vaqatan, qe külle, qe umtan, qe umtan xayane gapenita. Jemiyich vagon Modesto, City Hall. Albat akh rabo mingeshqanan, şimyina xurzid ana hatkodaxlon, o chedax min parsup prish esye professionals. Qad kemzimax baz xulmana, baz salamatutet pagra, umucha, o daxiyava xidiye, giu da xayuta, giu galuta. Nazbed al daachalashet akhanan itlan, o partner vidlan min mutva, qadila Assyrian National Council of Stanislas County, rabo xidiyich vaqad moydale pelxlan. Saba bviila xha xajmeta, bviila iltet xha khuya de şapira, qad jumilan giu City Hall. Umtan bedayna, qad akhanan kma itlan shuhara bi tashitan, bi itutan. Ina daxiva tachmantediyaq bi qurtajanet, edan xzilax, ene djwankan, qad tilon humzimlon, qad shamaqmena. Ina bi mud iqara qatan qubilon, şultanet atra laxha Board of Supervisors. Mudiva shqiltediyaq, o tachmantediyaq nazbed al dayuma bi qurtajanet.
Albet ah anad e rabro, o begrdayin azistii. Qad min tamnala, gudadan, gudadora, ala perset yuvali qadiyan. Qad amindi odexvali, zevegexva, min hetxet tuni lag, min mutva umtanaya aturayid Stanislas County. Ane gani vitun, xpetey berentet mutva kymashene. Ina kma lahomtala, kma şapurtala, kma basimtala, edan külle bijmajix moydale, baxshema, khudaxshema, obzi pelxanix moydale. Edana hukmeda atra, begrzayanina, bedayanina. Parmoyna qad akhanan iiket, miketiych, kma danala xha ivax. Daxtan i, we are the minority, one of the largest minorities, giu Stanislas County, good state of California, giu da atra. Ani da iqara metuin al diyan. Ita prishayid edan ani djwank xaziyali, bejuli, be tajwanku xamate, bejuli aturayi qet visheva, prishayid ani tre yaliket xartab xazitunun sogulii. Humzimlon be lişanet ganan, lişan yema aturayi, obzi lişanet English. Yenana baxshavin, külle, külle mchilen. It was something wonderful, wonderful, extraordinary. Qad nashaliva xaziyeh, nema bada, baladui talitum diyan. Ina kma lahomtva qad gurbab chshavi gennay, ana bnaayem va, dosti yenne, I was so excited. Qad parsup min prish prish shutapoyate, shutashe, umranhe, gashan, shamaşan. Yani parsup average household Assyrian, külle moydale zuwiglen, qad dayuma, xayuma rabo şapira, xayuma rabo diyah, xayuma rabo brixa. Qad jumilan giu Board of Supervisors of Stanislas County, obzi a iqara yura qadiyan mutilon, a proclamation qad qadiyan yubalon, mutxiron, bayi metxiri qet nisen, sharetet nisen, yerxet nisen. Pashdiya, giu şultanet da atra, az Assyrian Heritage Month, ovamindi rabo lahomimili, rabo aninkaili, qad modiyach qayalan, qad djwankan xamatan, la nechpi, la zadi, shavhri beda daxtan i our history, akhanan mayvax. Ita rabo begrdayin qad ala barixla atra, qad qadiyan a iqara mutila, obzi modila. Qad where they stand, where we stand. Mujod qadiyan qubilon giu betfate, bete meaning da atra, qad ishe, da atra basimah, atra qad ala burkhul. Akhanantiy men atrabate prish prish qad qadiyan pishne ujuzhe, saba kristianixva. Ina atra maran God bless America, qad dranano obtakhteyla, qadiyan qubiltala, obzi ayuma şapira qadiyan yubalon, pishdadiyaq qadiyan.
Rabo dos bi qurtajanet. Ahmaret hiviyet datit ina djwank xamate diyan, alaima maytadiyan. O edan edmijid chebu qad etxa awahhe? Qad maqumana, benoon e bnati giu galuta, qad malupana, maqruyana, qad hayayute yatila, qad ati o qamden e ahmaret şultanet atra, hamzimi, be lişan gane, be lişan English, tanimayna. O edan etxa şapira be lişana hamzumana, qad tashita maduyona. So xayuma edmijid şapira vaq e külle, o itdan iqara e külle dena xha shutashe, umranhe, qad shutaslon, ahmaret etvayal bnati jule tukmalit aturayi liševa. Xayuma rabo şapira va, o baxitun shikli o videos, o ana vojanet edmijid bi külle liban pelxanix, giu Stanislas County, qad hamsha umtediyan avila xaqala. Xaqala şapira, qad yatii mayvax, o bida shula o pelxana, qad pelxanix, qad, qad umtan laxarrahat avi, qad yatii itlon haqoyat.
Rabo dos, obzi herder dan abayin modiyan qad shulan diyan prishayid, ana bayin tiamtad min teodan men xati Carmen Morad. Ahile Carmenila xagishra, bele umtediyan, obzi bed şultanet America, the government. Oyad rabo basamta azistii, qad aten ani parsup bedayet, men e hamzumet, ita be saba bediyech, be urxediyaq, momtuyot a message qadiyan. Obzi anad e samganii, pelxanen be umti, ala mutanle moydale pelxax. Rabo rabo şapira shulul, edan külle zavugiwax moydale, baxa ida, idid oydale bedwaqix, baxshoxkamay, külle hayartan, pelxanen ilaka hayarta ke umtan. Adiya yen ilan mingibet prishayid mental health, qad iwech akhanan daxtan i, pelxanala giu Assyrian Wellness Collaborative, and behavioral center, obzi hukmeda atra. Yen min social security, yen min citizenship. Kut hayartet qad kamzax odexla, ke umtan akhanan vadox. Ita eya gano rabo aninkaitala, qad umtan sogul yatii, shuludiyan maili. Akhanan pelxanix, axalmet vadox, ke miletan, ke nem umtan. La purana, eya rabo aninkaitala, la ana zuzik sheklan, la Carmen hakak sheklan. Bessa amindi be tayle be xubba, be lebbba. Xamindi qad ala mutoli gülle bavatan, akhanan axalmet vadox. Xehet mariyala, külle xun e geshqan e sogul. Tachminitun be datit da diyan, datit da umtan. Melpitun qad djwankan xamatan, qad ati, shariki guet xidanate, hayirrike xagadoxina, saba anek tachmennen, ina akhanan la hayirax oydale, hichdanah, hichxanaxa qadiyan le hayir. So akhanan gerek xasid oydale dokechle, madimaran giu xutama, bayyan barxan ida, idagur, külxha umti sogul. Ala gemtet maran, şakurun ala qad qadiyan aperset bedryu voli, jomax moydale, şakshaxla, şemu, qad ishe. Hayirax, pelxax, axlax, şatax, pasax gudaha, ida, guda yuma, guda şita xetet.
Basamta rabo bi qurtajanet, xabrano xapira, yavan lebbah, anad e beshqalan aperset. Qad min taktanana, qad shulan xapira, hamshavitet hayiran taqab ne umtan. O baxanaf giu xurzixine, pushun aman, qaxa hamzamta, min trajdjwanka aturayi, qad giu City Hall xaziyalo xun, menan vi man.
We briefly have some comments by Mr. Mark Ismail, representing the Assyrian youth, and Zach will say it in English.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Marcus Malik Ismail, and I would like to wish everyone a happy Assyrian New Year, 6774 years. I would like to also thank the Stanislas County Board of Supervisors for proclaiming the month of April as Assyrian Heritage Month. Now, I would like to say a few words in my mother tongue for my fellow Assyrians. Akhunwatan ukhutwatan aturayi şlamalo xun. Bayin shaklin aha perset qam barxin, reshit sheeta, atureta, ishta elpe, shavamo, shawi arpa, qa külle aturayi gutiwal. Atlan qubil debuta rabo girta, min mashta'lan e depenitet Stanislas County, qam shatasta diyerxet nisen, diyerxet yertutad aturayi. Xayoma tashitanaya, qa külle aturayi baxaya gudaha penta. Aha igarta, ille min xha medxazyanuta yen point of view, txa alaima aturayi bidiya gugalu'ta. Ana şimmi ilan, Marcus Malik Ismail. Iwan achsusr shinne, o biryan laxha gu Modesto, California. Iwan eskulaya gu btsobe, bakraya qahawan ardexla. Shrarad idiom ilan, debushayuta da amma, ashuraya, ille baxaya giu galuta. Akhanan aturayi giu galuta, iwechku xha qaywandinos yen danger. Rabo girta, min bshurta, o tlockta, gu naxrayuta. Gerekha wax rabo hissher, qad xamixla hayayutan tlax pasrich. Babi iwechax sheeta, egat shoneilun awahhe ldaha atra, o yimmi iwe showa shinne. Yeni ob yimmi u babi, gugalu'te le qayme, ina. Moq yimmiwe, qulxha bettuteta, qat aha igarta, ktehuali bud idatet gani, be itwated gani, o bed lişanet aturayet gani. O blubdi lin atra, o xizyen duket semele, omsolyen droxet sahde. Walitet külle awahhe ilan, qat malpilon bone lişanet aturayi, tashita atureta, o tachmenta atureta. Ana bud xshoti, alaima aturayi baxaya gu shaina uslamah, giu galuta, ille qam xadatta. Qat hawix bishxelani, gu yelpana, uqnamia, qam asix sandech, o hayrech nashig u atra. Walitet külle ilan, qat min galuta, palsax qazitqan, banix, hayrech, sandech, o maqwixxqalan qan nashig u atra. Haw utvaba besime kamasmetohxun. Xagayxeta, hawaybrichta, reshit sheetet aturayi, ishta elpe, shavamo, shawi arpa, qa külle xun.
Hamzamta da diya xaziyalo xun, o şimyalo xun. Enet trajdjwanki ina ammi, obdawilan xha hamzamta, min erkim yakra, Mark Malik Ismail, o Zachary Malik Ismail. Bşenet itetun.
Şlam ala.
Hamzamta doya, albat ham be lişan ganan, o ham be English, saba bayax buj rabo geshqanan. O parsup qad bedayona gane aturayi, ina be lişan English bujkamsipar milan. Bşenet itetun, rabo begrdayin, udiyo laxha itun ammi.
Ha, bissamta, thank you.
Mark, edan pishtat blubla menox. Qad yumit isri ishta bi yerxet adar, itva giu City Hall, gu Modesto, giu mditet biriyet ogirveset gani. Humzimloq be lişanet yema, xha hamzamta rabo enan qeta, baxa yuqra. Ina bayin bakran menox, edan gano xktehwalox. Mudiva giu tachmantox, o mudiva giu lebbox, qad ene xabrane şapira peltlon, o mutailox albarax.
Tachmenti iwe bahaset ana, o alaimi didani, o future didani. Saba future didani, yani le rabo bright deya, saba lelek rabo mahdadé, o xelana deya. O gerekha wax mahdadé, sa qa opani naxraye, malpexlaq bahaset tashita didani, o heritage didani, qab akhni la pasrich, gu naxrayuta.
Bas me gano. Mark, imbismalo xun modi qad geshqanan ugrib, qad lena xayane gapenitet diyan, qad lena bedayox baz awahox, baz atashita şapurtet itloq. Edmijid chebu qat eqat etxa bruna girvestanag diyox. Xetxa modilan baz family diyox.
Family diydi, dix rabo korba mahdadé. O gu beshax diydiyax, hamzax surat rabo, o etxa leplis surat diydi. O heldeya lepin bishxabrik usurat, heldeya hun lepin lişanet aturayi, heldeya. O kut yuma ilan xha opportunity qalapin bahaset ana, bahaset heritage diydi, o bahaset history, o bahaset rabo mendiane. So kut yuma ilan xha opportunity, gu besh diydi.
Mark, kma shenog iwe dan sheril ogirlyapa, kttuta ogireta lişan yema?
Dinwa rabo sorag gu Assyrian school, kut kuttaruta, ta'zen Assyrian school. Dinwa rabo sorabelki ishta showa shinne. O xeshli madraset surat kuttaruta, o heldeya hun bakraya min qashayushiyah, gu marzayah, kuttaruta, o kubtutlo şaba, qarid mena, o, he.
Rabo magdiyantala, edmijid chebu qad awahhe? Qad etxa xubid lişana mutuna giu lebbox, o gano qda ma xubid.
Ha, bissamta, thank you.
Mark, mud feeling etfalox, edan keli etfa giu City Hall. Edan edan qamden Board of Supervisors, qad külle inan uchrayi, qad ina şultanet da atra laxha. O etfa belkitremaganai giu audience. O edan ah hamzamta be lişan ganan, humzimalox. Mud feeling etfalox, qad bedayetfa, alishan qad iset at hamzumut, pia shelle şimya bin uchrayi.
That day, in front of all those people, it was very nice to see all the Assyrians there, as well as the Stanislas Board of Supervisors. I wasn't really worried about, in terms of nervousness. It was more about get the message across. Get the message across and be confident with it. And hearing it from someone that is young, that is Assyrian in this diaspora, it's different when you hear it from them, because you don't really hear it from the younger generation anymore. And when you do hear it from them, it hits even harder, in my opinion.
Absolutely. You know, Mark, in a statement that was put on the Stanislas County website, they called you remarkable youth because of your testimony, of what your thoughts are, what your feelings are. So I want to personally thank you for that. I want to wish you a happy new Assyrian year. And of course, it is also Easter, so iduqavabrixa, şita xatroyabrakta.
Thank you so much.
I'd like to take this opportunity to wish you and all the Assyrians worldwide, Happy Assyrian New Year, 6774. We are grateful to the Stanislas County Board of Supervisors to recognize this month of April as Assyrian Heritage Month. A blessed and historic day for all Assyrians living in this county. My name is Zachary Asher Malik Ismail. I'm a 16-year-old Assyrian American youth, born and raised in Modesto, California. I'm a sophomore in high school and proud to be here, and would like to add some context on why this day is so special and meaningful. The truth is that most of our Assyrians today live in diaspora. Very few Assyrian people are left and live in original homeland due to genocides and forced geographical relocation. This has resulted in dispersment and broken families, where members live in different countries. This has resulted in many challenges. Today, we continue to preserve the fight to preserve our rights and properties in the homeland, and at the same time struggle to prosper and live in freedom. As a second generation Assyrian American, it is critical that I and all youth keep our faith and commitment rich to our heritage. Wow, we are celebrating a new year, 6774. It is events like this that give us hope to avoid extinction while strengthening awareness. My mother and father are first generation, and I see how much they care to preserve the culture and heritage. Assy, we will continue to honor, take pride, and have the courage to hand down the past to the future generations. Assyrian heritage includes, and not limited to speaking Assyrian, writing Assyrian, dancing Assyrian, and very important to me is eating delicious Assyrian food. Even though we have faced diaspora through immigration and forced movement of our people, we will continue to be proud of our heritage. We are very blessed to live here. Yet, we will never forget all martyrs and those that sacrificed for the sake of our principle. It is because of them that I'm able to stand here today. Once again, I want to thank you for proclaiming the month of April as Assyrian Heritage Month. God bless you, and God bless America. Happy New Year.
Zachary Asher Malik Ismail, bşenet it.
Bşenet, bşenet.
Zach, you spoke very eloquently at the Board of Supervisors. I want to thank you for your courage.
Thank you so much.
I want to thank you for being so articulate, because it's important to speak English when we are making ourselves known to different levels of government. You were dressed in humale attire, so you brought the old and the new together. When you spoke, and again, you were called a remarkable testimony of what the youth is. You spoke about genocide, you spoke about mass migration. How, when did you find yourself in your very young years of 16, you became aware of the uniqueness of your identity and your history?
I would say with my grandpa, he definitely taught me a lot about like what was happening, and also my dad, and he would, they would tell me like, some family members would be like stuck over there and like, and like they wouldn't have anywhere to go, and like, and they like wanted to come here, and they had a lot of family here, but they couldn't get anywhere because they didn't have money maybe, or they didn't have like the stuff to get here. So they would teach me a lot of stuff about like, we're like very blessed to be here, and there's a lot of people struggling over there. So, so I learned at a young age, my grandpa, for sure.
So obviously, our home is our school. Our teachers are our mom and dad, and if we're lucky enough to be living with our grandparents, they are the best source of education and history and language. But I want to also congratulate your parents for raising you in this environment, that you're so proud of your identity, and you're such an articulate young man, where, you know, a lot of the youth living in diaspora, they're so busy with their own personal life. They're so busy with finding their way. But it is such an inspiration to our nation, not just in the United States, but in diaspora all over, to know that our youth are thriving. It's inspiring to know that you are being raised in an environment where you are proud of your heritage, of your language. You learn it, you write it, and you speak it, so chebu batux.
Thank you, thank you.
We all heard and saw you at that Board of Supervisors. I know it takes courage, I know it takes practice. I'm sure you practiced on your speeches. But I want to ask you to never stop, to please continue to do any kind of work. I know you have college coming up, I know you want to pursue your professional aspirations, but never forget that you still have an obligation to your nation, to your umta, and we are always here to support you in any way we can.
Thank you so much. And I'd like to actually thank Carmen Morad for organizing this with the county. I know she won't say it herself, but from us Assyrians that were there on that day, it was a very happy day, we're all together in rabach, rabachidiya. O akhni surayeg giu galuta, gerekha wax bish involved, gu county, o government levels, qab op akhni gerekta odaxatxa, o malpexla naxraye bahaset tashita aturayi, o op heritage bahaset aturayi. So yes, big thank you to Carmen Morad as well.
Ha, basim rabo. Albet edan külle bijmajix, Mark and Zach, edan külle zavugiwax moydale. Xzilaxun gurbat shavi gennay, min shutashe, umranhe prishet. Edan moydale bijmajix, ene yuman xapira, kamsiyatiyali tutet. So abad rabo basimah, qab xabrano yavan lebbah o şapira. O denan min ten, min turvo xun, be chadan qatoh xun, midripagdi ton, gi xurza avilo xun hamzamiyatet, in itlo xun tachmaniyatet, baz alaima alamiyatet diyan, mu tachmonena giu galuta. Basim rabo.
Ha, rabo bissamta, thank you.
Geshqanem ugrib, bish milan min Mark Malik Ismail, o Zach Malik Ismail, trajdjwanki qad edmijid yavana hiviyi qad datit umtan. Be chadan qatoh xun, be umtan ugrib, azah xazaxla, xurza şapira, giu City Hall, nazbed al şita xetet aturayid ishtelpe shavamo shavi arpa, xagede beshqalan aperset baru xuvan ida xun, o şita xetet qe küllo xun, be umtan sogul. Pushum şlamah.
All right, next we have presentations, and we're going to kick off the presentations today with Assyrian Heritage Month here in Stanislas County. And to do the presentation, we'll have Carmen Morad from Assyrian Wellness Collaborative.
Wow, what a nice welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning Chairman Graywall, Supervisors, CEO, Jody Hayes County Council, and staff. My name is Carmen Morad, and I am delighted and honored to be here today.
The Assyrian community is so appreciative of this proclamation for the Assyrian Heritage Month and celebration of the 6,774 years of our calendar. April 2024 being proclaimed Assyrian Heritage Month means a lot to us. The Assyrian community is a proud community, as Supervisor Vito Kiesa will tell you. And the settlement of Assyrian settlement in Stanislas County started 130 years ago by the late Reverend Dr. Isaac Adams. He was a visionary and a pioneer who brought families to Stanislas County to farm and in search of hope, opportunity, and prosperity. Today, the Assyrian community is, I want to say, 50,000 and strong in Stanislas County. And this vibrant community is philanthropists, as we'll hear about today, entrepreneurs, business owners, professors, educators, teachers, doctors, nurses, and so much more. So by proclaiming this month, which is the beginning of spring in our new year, which we call Nisan, you have really made us feel valued and welcome. So thank you. I would like to recognize some Assyrian community leaders who are with us today. I would like to begin and ask them to come up. Janet Atanas, she is the Chair of the Assyrian Wellness Collaborative. Mr. Tony Vartan, Director of Stanislas County BHRS. Dr. Elizabeth Mikaeli Huber, Assyrian National Council of Stanislas County. Mr. Sam Reshu, Assyrian Universal Alliance Central Valley Chapter. Mr. Howell Howell, Assyrian American Association of Modesto. Mr. Martin Yamaran, Assyrian American National Federation. Shariel Yefan, Assyrian Aid Society of America Central Valley Chapter. Rawinat Marshamun of the Marshamun Foundation. I do believe we have Cyrus Samirfar and Sam David, former presidents of the Assyrian American Civic Club of Turlock. We have Anita Narso of Cassia and the Assyrian Youth Federation. We are honored to have members of the clergy with us, beginning with His Grace Archdeacon Ushana Rabi Gasha Ushana Cannon of the Holy Apostolic Catholic Assyrian Church of the East. Reverend Edward Isabek of the St. John Assyrian Presbyterian Church in Turlock, who was our first chair, by the way. And Reverend Charles Barnabas, the United Assyrian Evangelical Church of Turlock. We are honored to be here today. These are some of the leaders in our community. And after some brief, very brief comments by the Chair Atanas and Mr. Tony Vartan, we'll have a brief presentation by Dr. Ron Rodriguez, Dean of CSU Stanislas Library Services on the Sargus Modern Assyrian Heritage Project. And of course, Mary Weppler Van Diver, she's the Librarian of Special Collections and University Archives. And after that, we will briefly hear from two youths of the Assyrian community. Mr., he's a young gentleman, Mark Ismail and Zach Ismail. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Carmen. Good morning, Councilmen, Stanislas County Board of Supervisors. With your permission. Good morning to them. It is an honor for us to be here, to be recognized as Nisan, our new year, just as Carmen mentioned, to recognize and to be the recipient of this honor, to honor the month of April as Assyrian Heritage Month. It really gives me privilege to stand here and to represent our beloved community. We thank you and may God bless you, the United States, that has welcomed us to be in this great country. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman of Board, Supervisor Graywall, members of the Board, CEO Hayes, and County Council Boos, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm honored to stand before you today as we come together to celebrate the Assyrian New Year and the proclamation of April as Assyrian Heritage Month by the County Board of Supervisors. This recognition not only honors the rich tapestry of Assyrian culture and history, but also is a reaffirmation of enduring contributions that the Assyrians have made to our community and the world at large. For millennia, the Assyrian people have thrived as guardians of a legacy that encompasses great achievements in literature, art, science, mathematics, and governance. From the ancient cities of Nineveh and Ushur to the vibrant diaspora of communities spanning the globe today, Assyrians have persisted through challenges, always preserving their heritage and unwavering pride. As we celebrate the Assyrian New Year and the establishment of Assyrian Heritage Month, let us take this moment to reflect on the resilience and strength of the Assyrian people. Let us renew our commitment to safeguarding and promoting Assyrian culture, history, identity for generations to come. In my role as the Director of Stanislas County Behavioral Health and Recovery Services, I'm grateful for the opportunity to extend our appreciation to the Assyrian Wellness Collaborative, one of our valued contracted community-based organizations. Their tireless efforts working with us on combatic stigma of behavioral health conditions within the Assyrian community, also promoting access to the community is greatly appreciated and it's assured vision. In closing, I'd like to extend my appreciation to the Board for their recognition and proclamation today. Thank you very much.
We briefly have some comments by Mr. Mark Ismail representing the Assyrian youth, and Zach will say it in English.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Marcus Malik Ismail and I would like to wish everyone a happy Assyrian New Year 6,774 years. I would like to also thank the Stanislas County Board of Supervisors for proclaiming the month of April as Assyrian Heritage Month. Now, I would like to say a few words in my mother tongue for my fellow Assyrians. اخنواتن و ختواتن آترایه شلام لخون. بین شاقلن آها پرست قام بارخین رشد شیتا آترایتا اشتا الپی شام و شوی اربا قا کل آترایه گو تیو. اتلن قبل دیبوتا رابا گرتا من مشتقلانی دپنیتاد Stanislas County قام شتستاد یرخد نیسن یرخد یرتوتاد آترایه. قا يوما تشعیت نایا قا کل آترایه بخایا گوداها پنیتا. آها اگرتا ایلی من خا مدخزیانوتا یان پوینت ویو تخ علیم آترایه بریا گو جالوتا. آنا شمی ایلا. مرکز ملک اسمای. ایوین اتشسر شنن و برین لخه گو Modesto, California. ایوین اسکولایا گو بتصوبي بقرایا قا هاوین اردخلا. شراراد ادیوم ایلا. دبوشایوتاد اما عشورایا ایلی بخایا گو جالوتا. اخنن آترایه گو جالوتا ایوخ کو خا قیون دینوس یان دینجر. رابا گرتا من بشرتا و طلقتا گو نخرایوتا. گرکا و خرا باهشر. قا خمکلا هیایوتا نتلا پاشرخ. بابی ایوخ خا شیتا اگر شونیلون آواه لداها آترا. و یمی ایو عشووا شنن. یانی اپ یمی و بابی گو جالوتا لی قیمه. اینا. مقویمی وے کو خا بیت توتا قط آها اگرتا کتیوالي بود ایداتت گانی بئتواتت گانی و بود لیشانت آترایت گانی. و بلب دیلن آترا و خز یان دوکت سمیلی و مصول یان دروکت ساحدی. واليتت کل آواه ایلا. قط ملپیلون دونه لیشانت آترایه تشعیت آترایتا و تخمنت آترایتا. آنا بود خشوتی. علیم آترایه بخایا گو شینا و شلامه گو جالوتا ایلی خم خدتا. قط هاوخ بش خیلانی گو یلپانا و قنامیا قاماسخ سندخ و هیرخ ناشه گو آترا. واليتت کلن ایلا. قط من جالوتا پالش قا زدکن بانخ هیرخ سندخ و مقوخ خقالن قا ناشه گو آترا. هو تورابا بسیمی خماش متوخون. خاگه اخیتا هو يبرختا رشد شیتت آترایه اشتا الپی شام و شوی اربا قا کلخون.
I'd like to take this opportunity to wish you and all the Assyrians worldwide Happy Assyrian New Year 6774. We are grateful to the Stanislas County Board of Supervisors to recognize this month of April as Assyrian Heritage Month. A blessed and historic day for all Assyrians living in this county. My name is Zachary Asher Malik Ismail. I'm a sixteen-year-old Assyrian-American youth born and raised in Modesto, California. I'm a sophomore in high school and proud to be here and would like to add some context on why this day is so special and meaningful. The truth is that most of our Assyrians today live in diaspora. Very few Assyrian people are left and live in original homeland due to genocides and forced geographical relocation. This has resulted in dispersment and broken families where members live in different countries. This has resulted in many challenges. Today, we continue to preserve the fight to preserve our rights and properties in the homeland and at the same time struggle to prosper and live in freedom. As a second-generation Assyrian American, it is critical that I and all youth keep our faith and commitment rich to our heritage. Wow, we are celebrating a new year 6774. It is events like this that give us hope to avoid extinction while strengthening awareness. My mother and father are first generation and I see how much they care to preserve the culture and heritage. We will continue to honor, take pride, and have the courage to hand down the past to the future generations. Assyrian heritage includes and not limited to speaking Assyrian, writing Assyrian, dancing Assyrian, and very important to me is eating delicious Assyrian food. Even though we have faced diaspora through immigration and forced movement of our people, we will continue to be proud of our heritage. We are very blessed to live here. Yet, we will never forget all martyrs and those that sacrificed for the sake of our principle. It is because of them that I'm able to stand here today. Once again, I want to thank you for proclaiming the month of April as Assyrian Heritage Month. God bless you and God bless America. Happy New Year.
Thank you so much. Before Dr. Ron comes up, I just wanted to say what you heard Mark Ismail speak is the language that Christ spoke. That's why this is so important to us, to preserve it and for it to be heard out loud. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Ron Rodriguez and I'm the Dean of the Libraries Services at California State University Stanislas. I am very pleased to be here and to tell you how the university fulfills not only an educational mission to support the curriculum of the California State University, but also a societal mission as well. A library is a repository for the intellectual consciousness of countless men and women who through their writings live again for others to learn and experience. As we approach April and Assyrian Heritage Month, I recall and support the Assyrian community and recognize the Assyrian New Year 6774. To that purpose, the university library maintains several collections, most in special collections, but one in particular that is highly accessible on the first floor of the library. It is called the Modern Assyrian Heritage Collection. It consists of over 900 titles and covers the Assyrian experience in all aspects from roughly 700 AD until the present. For those who are familiar with modern Assyrian history, you will know that that history is distinguished by Assyrian diaspora, which refers to Assyrians living in communities outside their ancestral homeland. In the case of Assyrians, their homelands are in divided regions of Iraq, southeastern Turkey, northwestern Iran, and northeastern Syria. Assyrians have suffered major genocide throughout the 17th, 18th, and 19th centuries. The most recent large-scale persecution occurred during World War I and between 275,000 to 300,000 Assyrians were slaughtered. The cities of Modesto, but particularly Turlock, have been a destination of Assyrians displaced from their homelands. This fact leads me to mention now a benefactor of the Modern Assyrian Heritage Collection, that is Mr. Francis Sargus. Mr. Francis, Mr. Sargus came to Turlock at age of 14 in 1947. He maintained a successful law practice in Santa Barbara and now is retired. The collection honors his mother, who lived in Turlock for six decades. As I said, there's over 900 items in the collection. And today, I brought four books. And being a librarian, I can't help but bring the books. So the first one is Assyrians and Yonkers: Reminiscences of a Community. And again, this is in New York. Assyrians settled in New York as well. A book on Assyrians in Chicago, so Midwestern city. And all about the acculturation and the struggles of dealing as people with distinct culture in a city. And then a broader book on Assyritan heritage, which covers all aspects of societal impacts. And then the last one on a big overview of Syrian genocide, cultural and political legacies. And again, I bring these books just as a testament to the strong and collection that we do have. And I welcome and encourage you all to anytime drop by the university and explore the books in the collection. And I thank you all. And I also want to say one more thing. And by quoting Mr. Sargus, "Heritage is a part of us because it's in our genes. It is good to understand and embrace it because whether we know it or not, the decisions we make grow out of this reality. Heritage does not determine who we are, but it provides an important marker as to where we started in life." So again, once again, I thank you all for inviting me. And also too, I want to recognize Mary Weppler Van Diver, our Special Collections University Librarian, who maintains the collection and everything good about it. So thank you all for helping me here today. Appreciate it. Thank you all.
Thank you so much for allowing us this lengthy presentation. We do appreciate it. Seven thousand years of history is not easy to cover in a few minutes. And every time we get together, we close everything with a prayer. So in closing, a very brief prayer by Archdeacon Ushana Cannon of the Assyrian Church of the East. Those decorations that you see there, those are gifted by the United Assyrian Evangelical Church, Mrs. Janet Atanas. Those are for the supervisor. They're Easter cake decorations. And please take one to your home. Thank you.
In the name of the God and the Holy Spirit, amen. Father, all-powerful and ever-living God, we do well always and everywhere to give you thanks. Guide us in your truth and teach us, for you are God, our Savior. Through your gift of the Spirit, you bless us even now with comfort and healing, strength and hope, forgiveness and peace. Bless our great country of America, as each and every one of the Stanislas County staff. And we ask this through Christ our Lord and Holy Spirit, amen. Thank you for everything.
Well, thank you so much for that presentation. You're right, seven thousand years of history compiled about 25 minutes from You're right, seven thousand years of history compiled about twenty-five minutes from various leaders from the Assyrian community. The Assyrian community here in Stanislas County is prospering as we have many churches, clubs, entrepreneurs, leaders, media platforms, and we heard from the young students. I'm dating myself a little bit, but I can remember the exact day that Mark Ismail was born because he lived next, his parents lived next door to us. I was twelve at the time. So again, Happy New Year. We cannot thank all the contributions of the Assyrian community to Stanislas County. Although you guys are fifty thousand strong in Turlock, Modesto, but all parts of Stanislas County, and you're a vital part of our community, and we can't thank you enough, so it is our honor as a board to proclaim April as Assyrian Heritage Month in Stanislas County. I'm going to invite my fellow board members to add to the group of pictures. I think we're going to have to go into the panoramic lens on this picture, so please, as many people that would like to join in on the picture, and thank you so much for making the time today to come to be celebrated, celebrating the new year, but also celebrating all the accomplishments of the Assyrian community here in Stanislas County. Thank you so much. I'm going to have my colleague from Stanislas County District Two, Vito Chiesa, who, a large population of the Assyrian community reside in his district.
Thank you very much, and I just want to thank everyone, and remember Carmen will never let anyone ever forget about the Assyrian community here at the Board of Supervisors. She does such an awesome job. To the community, I always say the same thing, and Carmen always repeats it, it is the proudest group of people I've ever met in my entire life. There's no society that's had more adversity and continues to be persecuted than yourself. You found a home here, right? You're loved here, you're a part of the community. The tradition stays alive. I come and watch you guys dance all the time at the festivals, and keep it alive. Keep speaking the language, keep doing what you do, and from the bottom of my heart, appreciate everything you do.
And also, thank you Carmen for serving on the Stanislas County Planning Commission, doing more work on Stanislas County. Thank you again, thank you so much for taking the time. Appreciate getting the opportunity to celebrate with you. Thank you so much. Have a great rest of the evening.
Hi, my name is Ron Rodriguez. I'm Dean of the Library at California State University Stanislas, and I was very happy to be here today to honor the heritage of Assyrians, and it's a great day, and it's great to hear and see all the participation of the community here, and I wish everybody a very Happy New Year, 6774.
Hello, my name is Marcus Ismail. My name is Zaya Ismail.
I'm Zachary Ismail.
So this morning, we had a recognition of the month of April being the Assyrian Heritage Month. I'd like to thank everyone for attending this historical event, and we are very proud and pleased with the Assyrian community for their tireless efforts that they have devoted themselves into for numerous amounts of years, and you know, as a community and as a nation through and through, we could not be any happier. So we are very blessed this morning to attend this historical event. And the recognition from the city, as well as all the support from our fellow Assyrians, was very heartwarming to see, and everything went very smoothly, and we also got a lot of support from the supervisors, which is really nice to see as well.
As Mark touched on, the supervisors have been very supportive of our Heritage Month April coming for the Assyrians, and I just want to thank everybody here showing support and watching.
Thank you, thank you.
[speaking Assyrian] of the Collaborative. It is an honor and privilege for me to be receiving this, to be the recipient of this award, to be acknowledged by the Stanislas County Board of Supervisors, which they have recognized the month of April, or Khab Nisan in Assyrian, the Assyrian Heritage Month. I thank them, I thank the Board of Supervisors, I specifically thank my co-chair, Ms. Carmen Morad, who started this entire program. God bless her. God bless the United States, which has welcomed us with open arms, all the Assyrians from the world, to come here and to celebrate life. I appreciate it, and may God bless everyone. In Jesus' name I pray, amen. Thank you.
[speaking Assyrian] President of Assyrianate Society of America, Central Valley Chapter, [speaking Assyrian]. [speaking Assyrian] [speaking Assyrian]
Hello, my name is Martin Umar, Board of Advisor for the Assyrian American National Federation, [speaking Assyrian]. I'm a Board of Advisor and past president. Today, I am grateful to be here to share in the celebration of our first-ever Assyrian Heritage Month in the Stanisla County in California, and I want to thank the Board of Supervisors, Ms. Carmen Morad, and everybody involved in making this happen, making it possible. We have over fifty thousand Assyrians in the Stanisla County, and it is amazing to be recognized for all of our efforts and our people and our contributions as residents in the Stanisla County, and to share. And it's an honor because it's our Assyrian New Year. We are celebrating 6,774 years of existence, and what an honor and amazing opportunity to present our heritage and to preserve and promote it in our Stanisla County and in America. God bless. Thank you. Happy Assyrian New Year.
[speaking Assyrian]